I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under thy name, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please bow your heads with me and join me in the Lord's prayer. Our Father.
Lord in heaven, how will be thy name, thy kingdom come, that it will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Maybe just a moment of silence too for the victims of the gas explosion in Youngstown last week and the life that was lost. Good morning and welcome to our meeting. Our next public workshop will be Tuesday, June 11th at ten thirty a.m. in this room. Our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, June 12th at ten thirty also in this room.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco. Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated May twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four, and the regular meeting dated May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four. And accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Second.
And related to discussion, I want to again let the board know that if you're going to have video recorded meetings. They have everyone when they're speaking must be announcing their name before they speak, and there must be a transcription that is accurate. Neither of those things are occurring with our with our videos. You're relying on YouTube, which is missing words. People aren't saying their names and they're incorrect, and I would just urge the the board to correct that.
And I urge you, please speak into the microphone also, so you are collected also as everyone else is.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to approve transfer of appropriations.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number six is to receive the amended certificate of county budget commission number seven dash two thousand and twenty four.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seven is to approve the agreement prepared by the Ohio Rail Development Commission. Between the state of Ohio, Ohio Rail Development Commission and Trumbull County. And to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute said agreement and any future associated documents. Trumbull County and Braceville Township have been awarded a grant in the amount of up to one hundred thousand, three hundred seventy five dollars. By the Ohio Rail Development Commission for the elimination and restoration of three at-grade railroad crossings.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eight is to concur with the county engineer to close the following roadway. McNamara Road, what, Road, Rice Road Township Highway three twenty six A in Bloomfield Township and Orwell Township. By the township line between Bloomfield and Orwell Township for culvert replacement. And the closing date is Monday, June eighth, two thousand and twenty four through Friday, June twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nine is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permit for fleet vehicles requested by the company listed. S C D Management, Inc.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number ten is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permit requested by the company listed. Custom Utilicom, Inc.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eleven is to amend agenda item number nineteen as approved by the Board of Commissioners on May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four. To approve an agreement by and between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Braceville Township Trustees. Necessary for emergency repairs to Benedict Levedsburg Road in Braceville Township. Where actual physical disaster has occurred to the road due to road slippage and progressive encroachment into the Mahoning River. In an approximate amount of two hundred eighty five thousand, one hundred dollars. Amendment is necessary to correct the contract amount to two hundred forty five thousand dollars.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twelve is to amend agenda item number twenty as approved by the Board of Commissioners on May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four. To award the contract as submitted by Jet Excavating Company. For emergency repairs to Benedict Levedsburg Road in Braceville Township. In an amount not to exceed two hundred and eighty five thousand, one hundred dollars. Amendment is necessary to correct the contract amount to two hundred forty five thousand dollars.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to approve the promotion of Mrs. Shannon Dogarty. As a program coordinator, non-bargaining employee with the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services effective June tenth, two thousand and twenty four. Mrs. Dogarty will be paid thirty six sixty seven per hour with full benefits. And will be required to serve a nine-month probationary period.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Uh, for not receiving the information that I wanted to review about this item, I'm going to abstain.
Item number fourteen is to approve the agreements between the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services. And the contracts per submitted list dated May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four. These agreements create fourteen training opportunities at a total cost of two hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred thirty dollars and fifty cents. Fully funded through W I O A allocations.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to approve the purchase of service contract. Q one one zero nine two three dash S O H Trumbull J F S. By and between the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services and Wireless as a Service. For the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services and its Child Support Enforcement Division. There will be a one-time installation charge of twelve thousand, four hundred seventy two dollars and fifty cents with an annual cost of sixteen thousand, one hundred twenty eight dollars. For the term beginning from the date of installation for a subsequent sixty-month term resulting in the total contract amount. Of ninety three thousand, one hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Um, I wanted to have discussion about this. Does the does the data board get involved with this? Or I was confused as to why the I T department wasn't handling this.
Their own funding. Their general funds.
Even even if it's their own funding, I believe that things go through.
No, they don't.
Ev- every expenditure that, I mean, we've.
The highway engineers doesn't go through.
They're under the, they're under the commissioners, though.
But they have their own funding.
But it's under.
We don't, we don't budget.
Okay.
John, did you want to, John, did you want to say anything? No, we give them the mandated share. That's all we get.
They're, they're a department under the Board of Commissioners. I, I don't think that you realize that.
Right, I do, but we just give them the mandated share. That's what every county gives them.
We still over oversee the budget. There, we're.
No, you don't oversee those funds. You don't.
Uh, there's no way to explain the fact that you think that we don't oversee jobs and family services.
We oversee jobs and family services. We house them and we give them the mandated share, but we do not oversee the budget from the state.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Gargano. John Gargano, Director of Job and Family Services. Uh, this information dealing with what we're doing does go before the I T board. Uh, they look at it, they review it, they approve it. And then we move forward with getting it. This, we didn't have to go out to bid because it's a state purchase contract. Um, they've also done it for Children's Services Board. And even though I didn't have to, I did, uh, submit it to Bill Danzo, and Bill Danzo said because it's state purchase, you didn't have to, we didn't have to do anything.
Just for clarity, we don't oversee the state funds that you guys get.
No.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, you give us a mandated share like you said. Uh, then the rest, we get appropriations from the feds through the state and things like that, and that's where we get our money.
So yes, you did go through the data board. Thank you. And at the end of the day, whenever we have audit findings and they go over issues with jobs and family services. It comes back to the Board of Commissioners because it is, in fact, regardless of which funds are spent. Um, from the source, they are, uh, are, uh, the commissioners, so we, we are accountable for how you spend. I just want to make sure understand that, Mara, you've been here long enough to to know that, but thank you.
We are accountable for the mandated share and housing them.
Making sure it's, I, you can't, I, I can't make you understand.
I can't make you understand, honestly. You've been here four years and you don't get it.
Okay, so for item number fifteen, Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number sixteen is to authorize the advertisement by the Trumbull County Planning Commission of a public notice in a newspaper of general circulation. On Saturday, June eighth, two thousand and twenty four. Announcing the P Y two thousand and twenty four C D B G R P I G. The second public hearing for the Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Project located in a low and moderate income consent decree area of Warren Township. And to authorize the Trumbull County Planning Commission to prepare and submit the P Y two thousand and twenty four C D B G. R P I G application in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign and execute any and all documents related to the application. Administration, receipt, execution, and implementation of funds received through the P Y two thousand and twenty four C D B G R P I G.
Motion approved.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seventeen is to authorize change order number two. For a thirty-day no-cost time extension for the contract with M J D Excavating, Inc. For the Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Household Connections Project, Weathersfield Township. Change order number two provides an additional thirty days extending the completion date from June sixth, two thousand and twenty four to July sixth, two thousand and twenty four. This thirty-day time extension is necessary for the completion of restoration activities. Due to inclement weather and to allow for additional qualified households to be connected to the sanitary sewer.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco. Item number eighteen is to authorize change order number two for the thirty-day no-cost time extension for the contract with Express Underground. For the Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Household Connections Project, Weathersfield Township. Change order number two provides an additional thirty days extending the completion date from June sixth. Two thousand and twenty four to July sixth, two thousand and twenty four. This thirty-day time extension is necessary for the completion of restoration activities due to inclement weather and to allow for additional qualified households to be connected. To the sanitary sewer.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nineteen is to authorize change order number three. For a thirty-day no-cost time extension for the contract with Pollard Land Services, Inc. For the Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Household Connections Project, Weathersfield Township. Change order number three provides for an additional thirty days extending the completion date from June sixth, two thousand and twenty four to July sixth, two thousand and twenty four.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty is to authorize change order number four. For a thirty-day no-cost time extension for the contract with TK Excavating for the Heat and Shoot. Sanitary Sewer Household Connections Project, Weathersfield Township. Change order number four provides for an additional thirty days extending the completion date from June sixth, two thousand and twenty four to July sixth, two thousand and twenty four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty-one is to approve a school resource officer agreement by and between the Trumbull County Commissioners, Sheriff Paul Monroe and John F. Kennedy Catholic School. For the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five fiscal school year. For police protection and services for the John F. Kennedy Catholic School. Its buildings and activity of the school. Its personnel and students for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five academic fiscal school year, July first, two thousand and twenty-four. Through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. John F. Kennedy Catholic School agrees to pay the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office the amount of sixty-three thousand, five hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Has there was additional information that I requested and didn't have back in time? Um, no, I'm sorry, I'm abstaining.
Item number twenty-two is to approve a school resource officer agreement. Between the Trumbull County Commissioners, Trumbull County Sheriff Paul Monroe and Newton Falls Local School District Board of Education. For police protection and services for the Newton Falls Local School District. Its buildings and activities. Personnel, personnel, students, and public on site for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five academic fiscal school year. July first, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. And the Newton Falls Local School District agrees to pay the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office sixty-three thousand, five hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Motion approved.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because the Sheriff's Office didn't provide the, uh, information that I requested about these items, I'm abstaining.
Motion passes. Twenty-three.
Item number twenty-three is to approve a school resource officer agreement. Between the Trumbull County Commissioners, Sheriff Paul Monroe and Champion Local School District Board of Education. For police protection and services for the Champion Local School District. Its buildings and activities, personnel, students, and public on site. For the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five academic fiscal school year, July first, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Champion Local School District agrees to pay the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office sixty-three thousand, five hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Also because the Sheriff's Department failed to supply the information that I requested about this item, I'm going to just abstain.
Okay, this next motion number twenty-four.
Oh, my agenda has, that I took the notes on, um, the Buckeye Energy one, and I.
No, that was yesterday. We, we removed that from the agenda. We're having a, um. Frank Lutz from C C A O is coming up here next Monday. To show us the state's energy plan that fifty some counties are part of right now, and it will be seventy some, I think, by the time they're done with signup. So he wanted an opportunity to meet with us before we acted on the the Buckeye plan, so. I asked the Board of Commissioners too, that's something that. Uh, he wanted to know if we wanted to hold a special. Session with him on Monday where he can come up and talk to all three of us. Or if he wanted one representative to meet with him and to discuss it and then bring it up a Tuesday's meeting. Um, to see what we wanted to do, if we wanted to put the other one back on the agenda or not.
What we actually have, um, that no one in the county has been following since I brought the motion to pass back in two thousand and twenty-one. Was that any of these contracts that are automatically renewed would be looked at.
Of course, we, we haven't seen a contract yet from Buckeye.
Wait, would be looked at, um, I believe it was six months in advance. However, um. With you guys and everything that's been done so far since I've been here, they just go ahead and automatically renew things without going out and asking for a request for, um, proposals.
No, that's wrong. This contract's going to commence March of two thousand and twenty-five, so we're looking at it a year in advance.
Right, well, that's good, but what I'm saying is up and. With, this was supposed to be done, and it's not just supposed to include one entity, which, which is what you're looking at. There are other organizations, so since I've been here, Buckeye Energy is the only one who has had any agreement with the, the county. And there have been other, other organizations that have tried to work with the.
That's why I removed this from the agenda so we can get another company to come and look at it.
You're missing this, okay?
What am I missing?
Because you're looking only at one other. There are.
I didn't say we're going to look at the other and make a choice between the two. I said we're going to entertain the other one next Monday. This has been removed from the agenda with no set date when to put it back on. We have a year until this agreement goes on. If we have five people come to us and want to give us a pitch, we'll listen to all five. I'm going to trust the County Commissioners Association of Ohio.
So the proper thing to do would be to do a request for information or proposals for. So that all entities that, that are looking to do this work have the ability to present. Perhaps have a meeting where all of those parties can come and present rather.
Absolutely propose that as Commissioner.
That's what it should.
I, I am proposing that we meet with the one that reached out to us now and said, I'm going to show you what the rest of the counties in Ohio are doing. And I think we can save you money collectively through the County Commissioners Association of Ohio. Rather than just re-upping with the company we already have, they wanted a chance to get in there and show us what they can do. Once we hear his pitch, if you want to open it up like you said, and you think there's even better ones out there. That's great. You can call a meeting. We can do that. You can put an R F P out. We can do that.
To be fair, though, it should be done all at one time as to, as opposed to saying, this is what they'll cost. Then a week later, this is what they'll cost, then, then a week later, looking at others. That's why in government, the most fair process would be to ask everyone at the same time to present what their best, um, services and costs.
You want to write that up and do that, and we'll do it that way?
That's what the, the Journal Action said to do. That's what I believe should happen. I think that.
I'm saying, do you want to do it? Are you just saying the need's done, but I'm not doing it? Someone else should do the work for me.
It would be the clerk who puts those things out, the requests for qualifications or information. Um, just as, just as was done, if they would cooperate and pull up a, a past, um, example of when they did that, I think that that would be fantastic.
This isn't even an agenda item. Can we move on to the next agenda?
Well, with this, though, Commissioner, while, while it's on the table. Commissioner Cam Laysa, would you like to meet with Frank next week on Monday?
Sure.
Should we do a special meeting with him?
Frank.
Frank Lutz from, he's one of the executives with County Commissioners Association.
About John, right?
John, I'm sorry, John Lutz. Frank was another guy that was involved in that, but John wanted to come up and drive here Monday at eleven is what he proposed.
Frank, are you talking directly to the energy provider?
No, someone from C C A O that I talked to. Or is it something that we can just, can we meet with them? Can we meet with them? Does that violate anything to hear him out, to hear his pitch? Luckily, if we don't make an exception on that. What are your opinions on that? Or do we want to call a special meeting for Monday and do a public meeting with him to hear his pitch?
I, I think.
Believe that we should, I believe that we should have a, a request. To everyone who provides those services and then hold a special meeting with all of those who are interested in that agreement. Which would include, um, the organization that the provides the services for C C A O.
Well, I suggest that since C C A O is coming and John Lutz is one of their chief legal representatives. He could advise us as to how we should meet with them.
Okay. I will.
He'll advise, are you, are you suggesting that he would be counsel to the Board of Commissioners and?
No, I'm suggesting C C A O is a resource to the Board of Commissioners, and he's the legal counsel for C C A O. He could let us know how to do it.
You don't know how to have a meeting?
If we can meet with him individually, if we can meet with him as a group, if one of us can meet and then discuss it in a meeting, let's have him decide.
He initially.
That's why C C O is there for the resource.
He initially, yesterday, he said, I'll come up and meet with the three of you or meet with two of you, whoever wants to hear it on Monday.
Right.
Didn't mention anything about calling a special meeting, didn't mention anything about, and I said, can we do it during public workshop? He didn't think we needed to. He couldn't be here on Tuesday, but he said, I can meet Monday. If you want me to come up and meet Monday, I'll be here Monday.
It's the County Commissioners Association of Ohio. It's a resource to the Board of Commissioners. That's what they're there for, to ask questions like this. If he wants, whatever he proposes, I'm fine with.
Yeah, I will call him after the meeting and see what he proposes. If we need to call a special meeting, we can do so and notify correctly. And if your schedule's available on Monday at eleven, then I'll plan it for that.
Okay.
Have you called a special meeting?
Okay.
Just should talk to Brody.
Okay, now we have, uh, item number twenty-four, and I see the parties are here that we need, so.
Okay, uh, at this time, I'll make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to a higher vice code one twenty-one dot twenty-two G four. Preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations and the collective bargaining strategy for the Trumbull County Sheriff's Department. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
You want to go in your office, Commissioner?
Mine? I don't care. It's got papers that need to move, but. Yes. Always.
I'm just rotten to the core. Isn't that amazing? Things you say when you can't do. That's not good. I think it's really anyone that may be sitting here. You know, whoever. That's to be determined. I, I believe I have a, like a preliminary yearly schedule, but it's subject to change. It depends. Yeah, I don't either. I haven't looked that far. I think they have it turned down. It's up to them, the three of them. ...
It's time I make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to a higher vice code one twenty-one dot twenty-two G four, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations in the collective bargaining strategy for the Trumbull County Sheriff's Department.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the fact finding report findings and recommendations issued by Jeffrey A. Belkin, Fact Finder on May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, including alternative agreements incorporated therein by reference pertaining to the collective bargaining unit agreement between the Trumbull County Sheriff's deputies and Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent Association.
I'll second it.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes. That concludes our regularly scheduled business for this agenda item. Do we have anything from my colleagues on the board first off?
Um, there is something I wanted to bring up. I know I categorically disagree with spending county resources, comp time, or anything on the fair and the festival, but if you, and I brought this up last year, if you are going to, and I have heard in your workshop meetings that you're planning on going all out for the fair and the Italian festival, including having employees check on Amazon to buy things for kids and staffing, everything, I think that it's only appropriate that if you are going to participate in one festival downtown, that you participate in all of them. And I didn't hear any discussion of the Board of Commissioners reserving a booth or anything for the African American Achievement Festival, which is this weekend. And then there's also a full spectrum festival as well on the courthouse square. So if we are, if you are making that decision to participate in one of the festivals, I think that you need to consider the other festivals as well. I think you should have some discussion about that. You might still be able to get a tent. We do have a current complaint against the Board of Commissioners for racial-based discrimination. So I think it's wise that.
Are you available this weekend to man the booth? If you want to do it, we can do that. If we got the manpower to do it, I've, that's a great idea. Are you available?
What I was, don't you have staff sign up for these types of things and giving them comp time as you normally have, correct?
We're already into the work week and stuff where people already have their hours scheduled for the week.
So no one has taken any initiative to do so for this festival.
Wish you would have brought this up two weeks ago.
It up last year, last year, the week after the Italian festival, I mentioned making sure that the Board of Commissioners, if they are going to do that, that there's consistent and that they make sure that they're representing, there's a representative for all of them, not just one of them, because it appears to have some intrinsic bias there if you ignore certain festivals. So.
You are a commissioner, you could make a, you made a proposal to do that.
Given the fact that I brought that up last year and still nothing has happened, I think that you're sending a message loud and clear.
You're bringing it up that we shouldn't do it, though.
I don't agree that any, any comp time or anything should occur for people going to festivals. If you're not going to do anything for the festival this weekend, I think that you should not be doing anything for the Italian festival as well. So I would encourage you not to participate in that if you're not going to do this one.
I do.
Mara, what do you think?
I have no comment. I'm not going to entertain this nonsense. Let's move on, please.
Do we have anything else from the board? Okay, anything from the public? Please remember if you approach the mic, your name, who you represent, and you have the floor.
I am Shara Taylor. I'm the county payable clerk here for the Commissioner's Office. With that being said, I am off the clock and I am here for myself. Last week, there were some very disparaging comments from you, Michelle. Really nasty, nasty comments. I'll read them. Shannon Johnson, May, she could have asked for it back after, or like she said, just regenerate it. So clearly it wasn't a big deal. Well, that's just extra work and I thought the taxpayers would not want us to do things like that, but okay. So your response was, I have it, they're being petty. She's mean spirited and would be fired for insubordination in the real world. Some people are so lucky to have government good old boy protection because they're unemployable in normal work settings due to insubordination and bad attitudes. Can you imagine, imagine, imaging, sending this to your boss? And you know what it was? It was a response to you. Hi, yeah, keep your comments going. It was a response to you because you stole all my daughter's business cards from a business in Holland. Yeah, yeah, you, you did it. So here's David Pap. Wow. The woman asking for her paperback waving to the camera on her way out looks to be there in an attempt to make you look like you're not doing what you should. You don't do what you should. Never. Not one time, not one time since you've been here in what, twenty-one? You haven't done one thing, nothing. So we go on to say, this is from you, Michelle. Shara Taylor administered a social media page to bully me, shouts profanities at me, screams at work, shoved a door handle in my broken sacrum, refused on video to work, and is in social media in the day even insulting members of the public who have supported me. None of those things are true. Not one liar. Not one. There is a team of bullies against me, leading weak people. Two of the leaders had spouses who took their own lives. I feel very badly for people who have to live with emotionally abusive people. It takes a toll. So here I'm going to go on to the letter that I've been constructing for the last week, Michelle. I have literally been trying to eloquently reply to such a vile post on social media. First and foremost, Michelle, you did not know nor interact with my husband. Did he commit suicide? Yes, he did. Was it because I emotionally abused him? No, it was not. I can assure you that man would never be emotionally abused by any woman and especially one like you. You, Michelle, would not have been able to manipulate him like you do so many. Your pathetic attempt to put him in your little box is futile because he was far more than that. Oh, here we go, you're gonna leave. Michelle, your disgusting behaviors keep going on and on. You are delusional, demented, and living in an alternate reality. You're a textbook sociopath with several disorders to go along with that. When someone has this many disorders, they typically are unemployable and you have shown that with your employment history. However, the one job you had, they paid you a year's salary to leave and those were your words. You have made several comments about me being disciplined or even terminated. I have longevity in my job because of my skill set and my ability to get the job done. I did not know a single soul in the county when I got hired, so that narrative does not work. Normally, I would never speak to any of my bosses the way I speak to you, and that is because you say such despicable, horrible things. because you say such despicable, horrible things about all of us. I do not have to take any of your abominable abuse. The people of Trumbull County spoke on primary day and you were fired. Since that time, you have progressively increased your attempts to sue and disrupt the county on a level that is despicable. Every week it is something. I can honestly say that I've never met anyone as evil as you and there will be a seat exclusively for you in hell. Not only are you a sociopath, but also a grifter. If you're not familiar with that term, it means a con artist, someone who swindles people out of money through fraud. In closing, I implore you to just go now and collect your paychecks because the only thing you're accomplishing is tearing the county down further. Your narrative no long, no longer works. The people have spoken, you're fired. You are fired. Don't bring up my husband again. That was also to attack there's a trouble. So thank you for him. And we are, you'll be able to go back and rewind and watch all the comments and what we said. Blah blah.
Ray, you paying attention? Okay. My name is Bob Plan. I'm a resident of Warren City and Trumbull County. And I've seen some very disparaging remarks that you, Frenchco, have made on social media regarding bullies and weak leaders of people and some cruel remarks about spousal suicide on social media. I am a victim of spousal suicide and you have no clue about the pain we continue to live with and must endure. Didn't your husband die? Also, for the record, anyone who knows me will tell you that I am not now, nor have ever been a bully. I never truly realized until that moment when I read that post, just how low you would stoop in an effort to tarnish constituents and taxpayers. You showed your true colors and let everyone see just exactly what trash you really are. Our ultimate battle and goal was to rid the scourge known as Michelle Frenchco from the annals of Trumbull County and in particular, the Commissioner's Office in perpetuity. We are all aware of your tactics to post on social media, making cheap shot innuendo, back channel smear campaigns, et cetera, to try to elicit a response from us so you can play up being the aggrieved and wounded party. Play up to your minions, Kool-Aid drinkers and followers who are just as delusional as you are concerning your job performance as commissioner. News flash, it didn't work. The only thing you accomplished by slurring us and trying to make yourself self-righteous is to confirm that we all made the correct decision to do everything within the law to eliminate you, Frenchco, from the Commissioner's Office. My decision to join forces with new and old friends, constituents and taxpayers to rid and oust you out of the office of commissioner has proven to be the correct thing to do for all of Trumbull County and particularly the employees of the Commissioner's Office. A thank you does go to you for one thing. Because of your ineptitude and lack of coof and having no clue about simple common courtesy or social graces, you gelled us all together as a group with a common cause to eliminate you from the Commissioner's Office. Although I played a small part in the group, we did what we set out to do. In a few months, I hope that you will look back and as you are collecting your unemployment, see why this happened and see that you have no one to blame but yourself because you did this to yourself. Know and remember this, we will continue watching you and you will never know where we are or when. And that's not a threat. I'm not implying any threats here, just saying that we will remain vigilant. Say bye.
I guess I just want to say for the record too, I appreciate your bravery of coming up here to face a bully in this instance. I read on social media also what she said. I thought, I found it also despicable on behalf of myself as president of the board. I apologize that you had to endure that or anyone from the public that had to endure speech like that, you know, I can be set up here, she can call me fat, she could say I stink, she could say whatever, I'm an elected official. I signed up to do this, but employees in this county did not, they just should not be treated that way by their bosses. They should not be called idiots. They should not be called greasy sausage makers or, or anything else.
That's what's said ever.
Oh, well, there was a lawsuit, an employee was paid, it's in a deposition.
No, it's not. Actually, there's the, the, the judge requested.
You were sued for anti-Italian-American slander and bigotry and you.
Judge requested proof of, the judge requested proof of when I said that or when it was said and nothing that was alleged was actually.
We paid a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to an employee because of your words.
Didn't even get through the full discovery process and Blair's was kicked out from uh, an actual.
I'm not talking about that.
Here we go again, harass the clerk, let's harass the clerk.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, there's a reason we, you had you under censorship for similar comments. You, you continue to do this week after week, you sit up here and act professional and we're trying to move forward as a board for the good of the county. And then when it's over, it's back to showtime and the social media stuff is nothing but bully tactics. And the people that engage with you on social media, a lot of them should be ashamed too because they are contributing to bullying. To talk about suicide during mental health awareness month.
I was just gonna bring.
The way that you did, it's mental health awareness month and you last week were with, with some of the people from, from some of the organizations out there that are out there trying to work with people with mental health issues. And then for you to go on social media and bring that up as a, as a sticking point to stick your finger in a wound, not only to these people, but to the community. There are people that deal with suicide every day. A hundred and eighteen people committed suicide in the Moaning Valley last year. And yet for you to stick your finger in that wound is despicable.
All right.
So that's my say.
That's great.
We don't get elected to do that. We get elected to serve the taxpayers.
Shara Taylor again, I'm going to speak, I'm going to continue speaking. It was mental health awareness and you just, no, there isn't one.
Right now, let her finish.
No, no.
Let her finish.
It's not, no.
Be respectful to the public.
You want to say that we, we just, we earned this, we earned it? No lady, you have been a menace to society since the day you got here, a menace.
So I want to say for the record.
You are gross and disgusting.
Going to be continuing to watch me, just for the record.
Oh, listen.
If you see me walk away, do not follow me, do not approach me.
He's never followed you.
He did not mean that, nobody, nobody.
No one wants to be anywhere near you.
I am telling you, period, period. Do, do not speak to me if you see me, do not follow me if you see me turn and walk away.
But.
Or, or on social media, there were comments directed to me that are, that are, are concerned.
Oh, but you can say stuff about everybody, that is wrong. You know what? You get what you give in this life, you do. I was taught that my whole life. If I give bad, I'm going to get bad, but I don't give people bad. You, on the other hand, are just a disgrace to humanity. You're talking about people who committed suicide, oh, and they did it because they were emotionally abused? You're the only abuser in this room, lady, the only one. I, I know you threw your daughter down the steps, you've literally lost your kids for years, so don't talk about that stuff. You stole my daughter's business cards, who's just trying to make a living. You're disgusting.
I am going to speak up about the whole thing. I have.
We need your name and where you're from, ma'am.
I'm from Warren.
As a member of the executive.
Yeah, let her, let her, you were, you were next, you, I, I think you were next. Let her finish her comment first then ma'am, then we'll get back to you.
So something that we need to discuss as, as the commissioners is there was a motion of contempt and I'm going to say this on the record and I want to make sure that Mauro understands this, there was a motion of contempt that I filed, my attorney filed for Denny violating a court order. I don't, I want to make sure that the Board of Commit, the taxpayers are not paying for your legal defense. You cannot go to Brody, he was hired to represent the Board of Commissioners.
Did I mention anything about using Brody for that? Were you, what are you, are you, are you guessing? I didn't mention one thing about this.
Talking, you can try if you, if you can control yourself.
First, it's wasted more taxpayer dollars than anyone in the history of Trumbull County.
Control yourself, if you can try to exercise.
If you filed your thing, that's fine.
So the Board of Commissioners should not, should not be responsible for covering you for your contempt.
Really? We covered you for six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for your, your position as Board of Commissioner.
You are.
In lawsuits.
So.
Bullion.
Yes.
Okay, you filed your thing, let it go, let it go to court, see what happens.
What I'm trying, what I'm saying is there should be no, Brody, if he were to even have one conversation with you about this while representing the Board of Commissioners will create a conflict of interest. So I hope to God that there was.
Commissioner, you are not our legal counsel, we will consult our legal counsel on this. Please stop doing that, please come in here and start, stop telling us what to do legally.
Legal counsel.
He is our legal counsel. If he needs to recuse himself from that, he will.
Board, not, not for him.
Stop playing attorney, stop playing attorney.
Brody is legal counsel. Can I, Mr. Cantala Mason, myself.
As members of the board.
Against you, against your lawsuit against the board.
Stop interrupting, you see what you're doing.
He's represented as two factions. He represents us as a board and he represents Mauro and I personally, that you're not privy to in our official capacity.
Just stop giving legal advice, please. We will get legal advice from the requisite counsel.
I certainly hope.
You should have stayed another year or two with your lawyer.
Let me speak without interrupting me. You, you're loud and inappropriate and I'm asking, I'm calling for a point of order, a point of order for the President of the Board to actually run the meeting and, and congruently with the constitution.
Are you done with your comments so we get to the public?
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm asking for you to be able to be quiet while I speak because you're not following the constitution. If you interrupt me, if you interrupt me one more time.
You're going to file another lawsuit.
I was saying that I, I filed a complaint which what, I'm sorry, I filed a contempt motion because Commissioner Malloy violated a court order. So the Board of Commissioners and the taxpayers should not be paying to defend him in his individual violation. You know what?
There was no court order.
I'm making a motion.
Just fire yourself and move on.
I'm making a motion to adjourn because you're not running the meeting correctly. I'm making a motion to adjourn because he's not filing the meeting, running the meeting correctly.
Wait, what?
I am, a motion to adjourn.
First, you wanted to speak about something, now you want to adjourn. Now we have somebody from the public waiting to make a comment that's waited patiently for you to finish and now you want to adjourn.
I do, I'm making a motion to adjourn because he's not running the meeting correctly.
I made a motion to adjourn because you just had your ass handed to you by the public for your.
No.
Despicable comments on social media.
Is anyone going to second the motion to adjourn because he's not running the meeting correctly?
Your opinion, Commissioner, you've been censored and that is not the opinion.
For lack of a second.
Well, that doesn't.
Continue on her.
Okay.
My name is Lillian, I'm from Warren, Ohio, been here for twenty-two years, going on twenty-three. What I have to say about the whole thing, I have seen someone commit suicide, one of my best friend, I have lost a son in this county that had been killed in this county, that had been murdered in this county, so by someone had been body. So because committing body, you do not understand anything until you see the life of bodyness. So no one has nothing to say until you live that life.
I apologize for that. I apologize for those actions just now too, while you were speaking.
And as you can see, she can lob the hand grenade and then walk away from it before it explodes. You can't take the heat in the kitchen that she's, the fire that she started. This has got to stop, we've only got two hundred and nine days, public, two hundred and nine days. We have not discussed.
Haven't discussed yet.
Future things like that.
Sure, I'm sure.
One thing, while we still are in public session, while we still are in public session, we can discuss the schedule for the next two weeks because the clerk staff would like to learn that, if you have a moment to do that.
Sure, sure.
The week of June nineteenth, I will not be here, June nineteenth is a holiday, it is a Wednesday when we have a meeting. I would like to recommend we not have a meeting that week.
That's fine, we discussed that yesterday, I think, yeah.
We did discuss it, but I won't officially.
That's routine, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and then the following week, because of the fly-in, we know that I'm going, we don't know the status of if she's going or not, the games, we won't know until the day probably.
Right.
I would like to recommend the following week, we have our workshop on Monday at ten thirty in this, in this room and we have our, our commissioner's meeting on Friday.
When, when do you leave for the fly-in?
I leave for fly-in Tuesday and I'll be back Thursday night.
I don't have a problem.
So I, I don't want to, I don't want to put two weeks more or make it three weeks ago without a meeting, so I can adjust my schedule, be here Monday and Friday and then be in DC Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Madam Clerk, you can accommodate that too?
Yes.
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
And then the following week is Fourth of July and then I recommend we just keep it a standard, regular meeting on Thursday, or I'm sorry, on Wednesday, the third.
That's fine.
And then we just, and then the holiday, of course, will be the fourth.
Sure. We can discuss that at a later time with the fourth too, if we want to.
Sure. Well, I just want to give, I just want to give our staff enough time to prepare and our department has enough time to prepare their motions.
Okay, I thought the fourth was on a Wednesday.
Yeah, it's on Thursday.
Just be a normal workshop.
Okay, just Tuesday and Wednesday, yeah. Gotcha. Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, do we need to vote on that or is that just administrative thing? We got the second and we're good with that?
We discussed it and we'll, we'll read, I mean.
And we're good then.
Notified the press, they're here right now, this is a public meeting, I don't think we need to vote on.
So no meeting the week of the nineteenth, the following week, meeting will be on Friday, workshop will be Monday and we will put it in writing and do an official, through the press. Now, as far as, Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
He does want to come up here on Monday at eleven o'clock.
Is he okay with meeting with us individually or does he want to do?
That's what we, that's what I need to discuss and I just want to reiterate with you, if he says we need to have, that he feels is, you know, we need to have a notice as a special meeting.
Whatever he feels, yeah.
Then, then I will go ahead and have the clerk go ahead and announce that properly to the proper channels. If he says not, and as CCAO legal advisor, he deals with every county in the state, he knows. If he says not, then it'll just, but we'll plan it anyway, Monday at eleven o'clock in this room.
That works, that works.
And, and then we'll just entertain what he has to say.
Sure.
We'll, we'll take it under advisement and then, then figure out, you know, what to do for March of twenty twenty-five and beyond. Anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Anybody on the phone lines, gentlemen? If, if there is anyone on the phone line, you can hit star six.
Hello, this is Stephanie Scarpacy.
Can we get a little volume on that so we can hear them? Go ahead again, ma'am.
Hello, this is Stephanie Scarpacy, can you hear me?
Barely.
Barely. Are you speaking into the phone directly?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, there, that's much better there, go ahead.
So when you're running a meeting, just to clarify, so you're allowed to call her an addict, to demean her, to defame her, and yet she has to sit there and be quiet?
No, I never, I never said she had to be quiet. We gave her all the time in the world to talk as much as she wants.
Okay, so you think it's okay to call her, to call her names and to demean her and then also to sit quietly while she's being attacked and not do anything to intervene? Like how is that part of running a meeting?
You know, when, when you, when you start something, I was always under the, taught even by my parents, you, you finish it. And if somebody, someone comes at you, you get a chance to rebuttal. There was a social media post last week, which was unfair and, and our employee here apparently didn't want to go on social media and fight the battle, she wanted to direct it directly to her in a public forum in an open meeting. And as long as they maintained a nonviolent thing, I'm not going to restrict their freedom of speech or what they have to say, just like I don't want to restrict Commissioner Frenchco's freedom of speech either. Just like I don't, I don't want to restrict, um, Commissioner Frenchco's freedom of speech either. I may not agree with it, but I'm not going to restrict it and I'm not going to do that to the public.
So my confusion is this, and seeking clarity. When you have all of these distractions, how is this pertinent to business meeting and spending of funds?
Uh, it's not. And that's why I keep trying to resist to move on from that and not have those jabs. If you've noticed, everything we've done is tried to resist that and the, the public does retaliate back. But we don't start this. We didn't start this battle.
Okay.
Fisher Cantalace, myself didn't start this.
It goes back to, I didn't start. It's very childish communication. He's consistently asked for point of order. You've had a clerk speak out that is not supposed to be speaking out. He's tried to correct you several times and then when it comes back as a correction, you interrupt her, you speak over her, you aggressively speak to her in a tone and you, one, just the, in the tone, you talk about violence. There's violence of emotional, mental and physical. And perpetrators go on and do an act utilizing tone and aggression. You are much bigger than she is. And just your tone.
Trust me, Commissioner Frenchco can handle herself in a, in a verbal battle.
Oh, you cannot.
Run over much bigger people than me and many of them.
This is not, no, this is not, that statement is not excusable. To utilize a tone to just say, I'm accountable for my tone and know that it's not appropriate. Speak in that manner.
Have you, have you seen her grab the microphone and yell into the microphone? Have you seen that? Have you watched the meetings?
I have seen you call her names and laugh and encourage others to engage in that behavior. It is not professional. It does not get county meetings done. When she tries to implement strategies, none of you second it. Then it comes back. Just for example, when it was the conflict of interest and you're going off, oh, we fired, we fired. And then someone else screaming out in the meeting, not during the time, oh, semantics. It's not semantics. There is such a confusion in words and how to run the meeting. You're often asked if you understand how, how the meeting is run, you will not answer any of those things. You just currently ask Malloy or Mauro, uh, is this how we do it? You try to silence people. Your censure is like, let us say bad things about you, but you can't say anything back to us. That's not appropriate at all.
That is not at all what that means, but okay.
And I appreciate your, I appreciate your comments. I appreciate it, but I think 95% of the public disagrees with what you're saying, including myself.
It doesn't, sir, you can disagree.
You were seeing these rose colored glasses. You don't see the day-to-day stuff we have here.
Oh my.
When you are, when you're dealing with, I have no idea either. What I'm asking for, it doesn't matter if you have majority because even when we looked at the Civil Rights Act, 95% of the people were calling black people horrible, horrific names. And if we said, oh, well, 95% of the people agree with that, that is not what we're here to represent. We're here to represent all of the people, not the majority of the people, all of the people. You not holding a meeting when there are two commissioners that can run it? That's a clear message. You not, when she brought up last year of having everyone attend all of the festivals and not addressing that, there's a clear message again.
She never brought it up again. She, and anytime she could have recommended it like we did in a workshop.
How many times does someone have to bring something up? It's more than once?
No, but she has to do something about it.
And not address.
She can't lob an idea out there and let someone else do the work for her. When we, we're talking about the Italian-American fest. I'm on the phone calling people to reserve reservations.
No. And then when you talk about more work, she has, that she has to do, that she, nobody wants to do her work for her and she has to do her work. She's having to do above and beyond, above and beyond because she has no assistance, no cooperation could quote unquote from you. 95% of the people, like she should be able to have the same access to everybody. And when you go, you should be able to print that. That, why is that so hard for the clerk? The same applies that your principle for the clerk and her line of duty to just hit print.
Well, I'm here to tell you, we do have, we do have job descriptions. We have policies. We have union representation with a lot of things that we do.
Yes. And I see that a lot of it doesn't get followed. And so just so you know, we, all the people can see what's going on and it's, and you sitting there going, it's the majority of the people. It's not.
The voter said it was.
Well, when you look at the vote, it was a low turnout and it wasn't a clear landslide.
There's.
So let's just look at that. Let's look at that too.
Okay. Thank you.
So knock it off.
Thank you for your comments.
Respectfully disagree, but thank you for your comments.
Anybody else?
Hello?
Yes. Name and where you're from, please.
This is Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. Michelle Frenchco always starts, she pushes people and she pushes people until people start to push back. And then when people push back, she can't handle it. She runs to her little Facebook with her handful of minions. And it's ridiculous. The people spoke on March 19th. She got voted out. She got fired and she's trying to burn the county down on her way out. And that caller said that, yeah, it wasn't much of a turnout. It was about 29% if I remember correctly. It was exactly what the elections board predicted we would have. And if I remember correctly, Nikki lost by almost 4,000 votes. Almost 4,000 votes. That's not a little bit. She tells everybody, oh, everybody loves me. Everybody worships me. No, obviously that's not the case. But she's so desperate for attention and she's becoming irrelevant and she can't handle it. She acts like a little kid and she pushes people and she says stuff she shouldn't say and people are tired of it. The people spoke and she's done. She's done. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Ma'am Commissioner, make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion. Just remind people, we do have 29 or so more weeks and we look forward to these next 29 weeks to making progress and continuing to make progress and the majority of the board listening to the concerns of the citizens. Working on this new dog pound, working on 911, working on the labor, things that we're dealing with each and every single day. Working with the, the economic, um, impact uh, of the county and with the people that are moving here. We've got some guests that are moving to this county. It's going to increase our tax base, can increase, uh, the money we have coming into the county. It's going to be able to get us to expand services for the public. And, and let's look at the positive of things and not dwell on drama. Let's not dwell on, you know, change the channel. You know, turn it off of Jerry Springer and put it on the economic business channel or something for a change. And let's look at the positive of Trumbull County. And I second that. Just the common sense thing. And what we're talking about in the paper, it was in the paper today, just explained when people came in the county buildings before, you know, they, of course, there's no knives, no weapons. And sometimes construction people had screwdrivers. Sometimes the little ladies had sewing scissors in their purse. An old farmer would have a little case knife he carried for 40 years and their option was take it back to your vehicle or you gotta put it in this lockbox and it's gone. You have to forfeit it. And when I made it aware to the sheriff, I, I just, full disclosure, he was okay with that. We had a new shift change recently. The deputies came from another building and were doing it differently. Mr. Gargano had a great idea. You know, let's standardize it for everybody. And, you know, we're not, we're looking to keep troublemakers and danger out of the building. We're not looking to pat people down to confiscate things for the good. I mean, things are being, were being destroyed and it was just useless. So, um, we want, we want people coming to our county buildings to be a user-friendly, um, experience and people to have a good experience when they're here and not have to deal with something like that. Now, of course, yeah, they have to go through the metal detector for safety. We can all deal with that. It's no big deal. It's not invasive the way that our deputies are very respectful and polite. Uh, but with the knife thing, I think we've got it worked out there and, and it's just a good thing that was overlooked and now we're taking care of it to make it better.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all.